I have a time at 7:00 AM if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could take the roll, Mr. Houston.
Mr. Raymert. Mrs. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
We have a quorum. Mrs. Reed, as Vice President, you will chair tonight's meeting.
Please be, give me some grace. I have not done this in a while. I think Mr. Raymert does a nice job, so hopefully I can do as well. Taking roll call, so now it is visitor comments. Each person will be given five minutes. It's difficult. Just please state your name and address for the record. Come up to the podium as well.
Mark Cross, 444 South. Right, actually, I have a question. I can, could wrap this up later. Mrs. Reed, in your report, are you going to address the proposed changes to the JED contract discussed at the 8/16/21 JED meeting for the people that weren't here?
Oh, we're not here at the JED meeting.
At the JED meeting, which is most of the people here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my only, that's my only question. Good, thank you.
Take off your report.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I have, hold on just a minute, we're passing out paper. Paper. The ones that jump all the way down to the chief.
You want one?
No, thank you. Okay, now that we're organized. All right, I have given you two sets of minutes. The August 9 regular meeting minutes, as well as the August 16 special meeting, which was the JED meeting. Are there any corrections to either set of minutes?
I didn't see any, I did not see any corrections.
I have a motion to accept both of them.
Motion to accept both minutes as submitted.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. You also have received the August financial reports. You have five different reports. The first one is the fund status report as of August 31. You have the cash summary by fund. This is the year-to-date from January 1 to August 31. You have the cash summary by fund for the month of August, which will allow you to tie in the receipts and the payments. You have the receipt listing for August, and you have the payment listing for August. And I want to point out a few items. Receipt number 101 for $520,527.51 was an advance of the August real estate tax collections from the Montgomery County Auditor. And just an FYI, we have now received the settlement offer numbers and payment for the August collections. So that will be in my September report, and I will also be paying the city of Germantown in September for our joint levies. Receipt number 104 in the amount of $5,128.63 was a donation from the Germantown Area Senior Citizens, Inc. And as you know, the GISC recently disbanded, and that donation was given to the police department. Receipt number 109 is a $10,000 loan payment from the Germantown Union Cemetery, and that is related to their 2006 land purchase. And the amount that is still owed to the township from the cemetery is $29,276.23. And receipt number 112 is a $151,574.79 grant. This came from the state of Ohio. It's related to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And this is the first of two payments. An identical amount will be received in mid-2022. Now, the ARPA receipt has been recorded in a brand-new fund, number 2273, which I established specifically for the ARPA transactions. And you will also see receipt number 111 for the same amount that was voided. I initially recorded this receipt into 2901, but was subsequently instructed by the Auditor of State to instead use Fund 2273. So Fund 2901 is an unused fund now, and I will be able to delete that at the end of 2021 when we close out the year. And finally, the only other, the only warrant that I wanted to make sure and point out to you is warrant 640 for $10,859 even to K.E. Rose Company, and that was for outfitting the new police cruiser. Are there any other questions about the financials? And if not, I will ask you to approve the August financial reports, authorize the payment of August bills, which are warrants 50513 through 50516, and vouchers 561 through 676 for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Some moves.
I'll second.
And were there any further questions you wanted to ask anybody? Okay. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Last month, you passed Resolution 2021-29, and that resolution concerned the opioid proposed settlement that was negotiated by the Ohio Attorney General Dave Yost and the attorneys for Ohio subdivisions. And as you will recall from that meeting, notice of this settlement and the need to opt-in was sent to townships with populations greater than $10,000. And even though German Township did not receive that notice, since our population is below that threshold, you authorized me that night to opt into the settlement. Subsequent to our meeting, I learned from the Ohio Township Association that small townships such as ours were automatically included in the settlement and will receive the funds without having to opt-in. So as such, I did not submit the document. And FYI, it's expected the German Township will receive somewhere between $7,700 and $14,000 in total over 18 years. So we will not see much every year. Okay. Every year, we pass a resolution accepting the tax amounts and rates for the current year to be received the following year. This resolution, once signed by me, is due to the Montgomery County Auditor by November 1. And I sent to you the estimated 2022 property tax revenues and the 2022 estimate of the local government fund revenues. And this resolution should be as follows. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Montgomery County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. And this will be Resolution 2021-32. If someone would please introduce that resolution.
I'll introduce Resolution 2021-32, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Montgomery County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
I will second that.
Any discussion of Resolution 2021-32? Hearing none, I will call the roll, Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-32 is adopted. Now, next, on behalf of Shawna Close, we need to pass a resolution tonight certifying the 2021 tax assessment for delinquent trash bills over $150. This list will then be sent by me to the county auditor, and they will, and those amounts will be attached as a tax lien on each property. And I believe the deadline for submission to the county for that is October 1. And this year's amount is $7,338.90. And the wording of the resolution is as follows. A resolution to authorize the assessment of property owners who are delinquent as to waste disposal service charges pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 505.33, in the amount of $7,338.90. This will be Resolution 2021-33.
I'll introduce Resolution 2021-33, a resolution to authorize the assessment of property owners who are delinquent as to waste disposal service charges pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 505.33, in the amount of $7,338.90.
I will second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion of Resolution 2021-33?
Much lower number than last year. Last year, it was like 20,000, I thought, so.
I was surprised by that number that you gave. Please.
That's a great thing. It means our residents are paying their bills. Thank you very much to all of you for paying your bills. Any further discussion? If not, I will call the roll, Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2021-33 is approved. All right, next. First National Bank of Germantown, as they do each, oh, sorry, has requested that the township sign an updated Main Street originator agreement that governs the township's payroll direct deposit transactions. I have not seen that, an updated version of that, since I started, and I'm not sure how often the bank requires us to do it. But this is a requirement they're telling me that their auditors must have, they must have in their file for their auditors. So what I'd like you to do is pass a resolution giving me the authority to negotiate the terms of that agreement, and then sign the document on behalf of the township.
Would that be Resolution 34?
That will be Resolution 34.
All right, I will. Request Resolution 2021-34 to negotiate the terms, or allow Mr. Houston to negotiate the terms with First National Bank of Germantown.
I'll second.
And this would be for the Main Street originator agreement. That's your, the terms I will be negotiating. Thank you very much. Any discussion of Resolution 2021-34? Hearing none, I'll call the roll, Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2021-34 is adopted. Now, each year, First National Bank also comes to the Township Hall to perform their annual disaster recovery test. Back in 2018, the trustees approved the use of the Township Hall meeting room by the bank to run the bank's operations in the event of a disaster at the bank. And again, this test is a requirement of the bank's regulators, and this morning, we agreed that they will be here the morning of October 6. I wanted to let you know that I attended the Montgomery County Township Association virtual meeting on August 23. There were two speakers. One is more significant to us, and that she was Nicole Lawhorn of the Ohio Department of Transportation, who discussed the Township stimulus program grants that are available up to $250,000 for township culvert, sidewalk, and roadway projects. And last month, you authorized Mr. Holberg to apply for a grant under this program. The second speaker was Tanya Rogers of the law firm of Baker Double Car in North Canton, Ohio, and she discussed use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. She gave a shortened version of the presentation that she and her fellow attorney Greg Beck presented during the July 28 OTA webinar, which I attended, and I think perhaps you've already watched. So what she said at the MCTA meeting was no different than what we had heard in July. But the next MCTA meeting will be the Holiday Gala on November 17 at the Mandalay Banquet Center. And this is a change in date. They originally had scheduled it for November 18, and now it's one day earlier. All right. Back on August 30, I met with Jeremy Holberg, Scott Hamilton, and Shawna Close, and Haley Sewell to complete a cybersecurity questionnaire that is required by the OTA Risk Management Association, otherwise known as OTARMA. And that had to be completed before our policy is renewed for 2022. It was not an easy document to complete, and so I thank all four township employees for helping me with that. And the completed questionnaire was sent to OTARMA on September 5. We have received an invitation from the Germantown Chamber of Commerce to join as a member for 2122. Membership dues are free for that year. I don't think we've ever been a member, but we've been invited. There is an annual membership meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 at First National Bank of Germantown, at which time the chamber's directors will be elected for the current, for the coming year. If you want to join the chamber, I think all we need is just a motion to do so. And you should also, in that motion, name the voting representative for the township.
Not any harm in us joining, I'm just not sure.
It's either Tyler's going to be the voting representative, or we don't have one. So that's where we're at with that, so.
If you want Tyler to do it tomorrow, that's fine.
I don't know if he would be able to, but I'm fine with naming Tyler.
Okay, we can pass it if he can go.
Instead of that, why don't you just say the president of the board will be the voting member?
That's fine.
That way, it's whoever's president.
Yeah.
You don't have to change things around.
Can it be that vague?
Two.
No, no, he said, why don't you just name it the president?
It's just the president.
Yeah, can it be that vague, or they're more specific?
I think it could be. I think so.
That works.
And each time we change president, we can inform them.
But now they're also there.
Well, inform the chamber who the new voting representative by name.
Okay. Does someone like to make a motion that we join the chamber and appoint the trustee president as the voting representative?
I'll make a motion that we join the Germantown Chamber of Commerce and appoint whomever may be president of the trustees at the time to represent us.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I want to remind everyone listening and in the room that we will have a special meeting this coming Saturday morning concerning the JED. That will be at 8:00 AM. So if you want to come, get up early. And finally, just to remind everybody that next month's regular trustee meeting will not be on Monday, October 11, which is our normal meeting night because that is Columbus Day. We will meet the following day, Tuesday, October 12. And with that, I am done. Thank you very much.
Question? Have you got any updates as far as what local area, or local communities or cities are doing with the ARPA funds?
Mr. Cross, would you be kind enough to come up so that people online can hear?
Actually, they can hear me fine when I was at the JED meeting, even when I was sitting down.
Now, your mask also, so that might make it a little more difficult.
I would ask that, Mark.
I have not, you asked if I had any update.
Yeah, so let me, let me give the board a little update, and these are all from Dayton Daily News articles. On 8/13, it said that the Springbrough City Council made the decision to utilize ARPA funds to pay water, sewer, and trash bills in May for all their residents, which I thought was very interesting. I don't know how we could do that. We don't obviously have water and sewer bills, but we do have trash bills. On 9/5/21, it was, an article was Miami County Commissioner has hired a project manager to oversee the use of ARP funds at 3644 an hour. Their possible projects included county, update county facilities, air conditioning, heating, and air handlers. The city of Kettering will spend 71% of their $13.8 million from the ARPA funds on capital improvement projects and capital equipment because the city meets the revenue loss qualifications of the ARPA due to business shutdowns and job losses related to COVID-19. Unfortunately, I don't think if we can prove that we've lost income, that's going to be the big question. But that's what they're doing. They're actually using it for capital improvements. On a positive note, the federal infrastructure plan will provide over $100 million to Ohio to expand broadband access to unserved and underserved communities, according to an article on 9/7 in the Dayton Daily News. The article also stated that high-speed access is vital and is lacking in many areas of the county, including rural areas of Germantown. So Germantown made the news. That's so good. It does seem that the township may have some options to spend the American Rescue Plan Act funds, especially to upgrade internet service. And the one question is, luckily, you have plenty of time to decide that as far as, and that may be something, because it's such a big amount of money, you may want to wait till the new administrator or the new trustees come in in January. So that's an update. So there are uses for it that other communities are getting creative about. And I don't know whether we could do that, but something to be aware of.
I appreciate that, Dr. Cross. I did not put that on my agenda to talk about tonight because Mr. Raymert had said we'll do it quarterly. But I thank you for that information. Couple of things you mentioned, one was the consultant. That is indeed allowed. The funds can be spent on a consultant to help decide, as well as additional staff to monitor grants or whatever might occur. So that's, that is perfectly allowable. I think most of those that I'm reading, and you've mentioned them, are using the caveat of revenue loss to justify what they're, what they're doing. Several of those, to my opinion, and you've asked me about, I know, the trash payment moratorium. I don't see how it justifies.
Yeah, I know, but it may be something.
But it may be something we can look at.
Right. Well, how they did that, yeah.
I have not yet calculated what kind of revenue loss we have. I know we will have some, but it will not be as significant. Today's paper had an article about, I think it was Lebanon, thinking about using it to repair the train tracks for the little railroad that runs out of Lebanon.
And we talked about the gas tax loss, but again, I don't know how we can, I don't know if you've figured out how we can, we can determine how much money was lost in gas tax because the tax went up during that period, so.
I use 2019 when I do the calculation and compare it to that.
Yeah, maybe that may, if you can verify that tax loss, certainly they, we could maybe use that to, some of the funds. Good luck. Thanks, Mark.
Luckily, we have plenty of time.
Exactly.
All right, Chief?
I have an exciting event to announce for everyone, and that's October 5. We'll have our national night out here in person. We missed it last year. We use the alternate date, which is October 5, the first Tuesday in October. We adopted that several years ago. We're trying to put something together that everybody can enjoy. I think, did your boys do archery last time? I'm trying to get the archery back. We have the canine will be here, maybe some other area canines may assist us. So we're looking forward to that. October 5, Tuesday night, 6 to about 8, and hope to see everyone. Sunday, this past Sunday, yesterday, Officer Gabeer attended an appreciation ceremony at Germantown Church in Nazarene on Butter Street. They held it to show support for area first responders. Other agencies were there as well. He said he had a wonderful time, and it's good interaction with one of the groups that we serve. And lastly, I'd like to declare as excess to be sold by auction on Gov. Deals, one 2014 Ford Explorer. That is the vehicle we just replaced. One of the things we did was we did not remove anything from it. We're going to only allow government entities to purchase it. Typically, we get about $2,000 when we do put it on Gov. Deals, and that's open to anyone. One problem that we ran into is Ford has now made their Cruisers a wheel drive a little bit wider, so the light bars don't fit right. So we left everything in place, and hopefully, we'll be able to get maybe $8,000 to $10,000 out of it. That's mostly what they're going for on Gov. Deals, maybe to a smaller department that doesn't have the funds to buy a brand new car. So hopefully, if we can get this declared as excess, we will proceed by selling it on Gov. Deals.
So we'll do that by resolution.
By Resolution Number 35.
I'll introduce Resolution 2021-35, a resolution to declare the 2014 Ford Explorer police car excess to be sold on Gov. Deals.
I'll second that.
Any discussion of Resolution 2021-35? Hearing none, I will call the roll, Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 21. 2021-35 is adopted. And that concludes my.
All right, and Mr. Fullbrook is not here this evening, so that's Mr. Cool.
Thank you. So first on my agenda tonight is the online bill pay, GoDaddy survey. I gave all of you a packet. So this was kind of interesting. People that did not belong to our zip code took the survey, and people that did not belong to the township took the survey.
And they answered that they didn't belong.
Right. So I have narrowed the results to people that live within 45327 and within the township. So those are the only results that you will see. If you go to the fourth page, it says, breaks down cash check or through banking. Less than 5% say they pay by cash, over 70% pay by check, and a little over 22% pay through their banking institution already. Page 5, question, would you like to use, would you like the ability to use automatic bill pay? Over 60% said yes, a little over, it looks like 35% said no. Let's see. And then, would, the next page, page 6, would you use an online bill pay service if there were a small additional fee? 35% said yes, 65%, 64.9% said no.
So that seems like that's half, 35%.
Virtually half of those who said they would use it won't pay the fee.
Right. Now, again, I don't know if you guys remember, but there are two ways to do it. One way is to pass the fee along. The other way is to absorb the fee. Typically, always, if an entity or business or anybody absorbs the fee, they just add that fee on to what it costs. You know, so I'm going to say I don't know any business that absorbs the fee in whole. Question 7 was, would you prefer the ability to pay zoning fees with a credit card? Now, I know personally, almost every single person that comes into my office asks if they can pay with a card. But these results are about 50/50.
Just appreciate the comments on the end. I would pay it on time. If I could pay online, I like that comment.
And then this was interesting. I thought this might be good for you all. One of the questions was, how do you pay your trash bill? Quarterly, bi-quarterly, annually, or I don't? Quarterly was over 90%. Bi-quarterly was over 5%. Annually was 2.5%. And 1.3% say I don't pay.
$7,000.
So yes, as Abra said, there are, on the last two pages, some comments. They have the ability to leave a comment if they'd like to. 13 people that left comments specifically said yes, that they would like it. And one of them said, I would pay it on time if I could pay online.
I love the honesty. That's what I appreciate.
So there are the results for you to review. We do not have a timeframe on when we have to advise if we are going to use the online bill pay service through fireworks. So we can start at any time.
We might have addressed this to the last meeting, so please forgive me if we did. Is this something because, I know our last COVID money, we could do things that would limit exposure, if you will? Are we able to, and I don't have the breakdowns in my bag, pay that fee with, out of those funds?
That would be a question I'd want to refer to the prosecutor.
If I recall.
Because I think that's a stretch, from my opinion, but he or she may not feel that way.
I was just curious. I didn't know that way. It wasn't.
And of course, that could only go through 2026.
Sure, because it's a yearly. Aren't they, both of them are yearly fees?
Yes. So to. Yes, so to use the service as a yearly fee, and then each transaction, just like if you were at the grocery store or anywhere else.
I appreciate you doing that.
Absolutely. Did you guys have any questions about the survey?
I think it's really interesting.
I thought it was, I thought it was pretty interesting. One, people took it that don't live here, and two, people said they don't pay it.
Six people went through the whole survey and took it, and another they said they don't live here.
Well, more than that. Because there were almost 200 people that took it, but this is only the result.
Oh, for the people, okay.
For the people within the township. Or that said they lived within the township. Right. Next on my agenda is the lightning suppressor system that I had just brought to your attention. I was asked to get another quote. The first quote was for placing it on top of the cell tower. This quote is to place it, I believe, on the road department buildings. He said that he could come in and speak to you guys about that if you guys would like more in-depth details about that. Also, he included, I'm sorry, it's not a great picture, but the area that it would protect. And I did notice on the quote that he has, there's a 10-year warranty and a $500,000 no-strike guarantee.
I think we'll take this and review it. There's no sense.
Absolutely. Right, absolutely. Did you guys have any questions about that?
I appreciate the reference sheet you put on the back of it.
Yeah. All right, and then permit, so over the last month, not been too busy in the permit department. Ag exempt structure on Moses, and some additional antennas on a tower on North Butter. That's about it. I do have a pending case. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on October 12th at 7:00 PM, right here. It will also be available on WebEx to view a conditional use case. We also have the zoning commission meeting on the 5th of October, 7:00 PM, right here, also available on WebEx for a regular quarterly meeting.
What time is that meeting on the 12th? Because, you know, we have our meeting on the 12th.
Seven. Isn't ours at 6:00? Oh.
Ours is at 7:00.
I will have to reschedule that. I didn't even think about that when I scheduled it.
Is that the Tuesday?
Uh, yeah.
Second Tuesday?
The second Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, that's our meeting night.
October 15th, maybe, it's 8:00 to 9:00.
National Night Out.
You may want to reschedule both of them.
I can look to see. If they do get rescheduled, obviously, it will be posted on the Facebook page and the township website.
One question, Barn on Diamond Mill. I think I asked you about it.
Oh, yes.
Top of the hill.
Yes.
Ag exempt?
Yes.
I've just gotten a couple of complaints about that.
Yep, Tyler reached out to me, too. He also got a couple of complaints. That was, it has been several months since I wrote that.
Right.
But yes.
Ag exempt. I figured it was, so that's the information I had passed along. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, got everything, Cecilia?
Yes, that concludes my report. Thank you.
First thing, we do have a senior oversight meeting on, right here. October 7th at 4:30 is the senior center meeting. If any of you would like to attend that. I'm also going to announce that this is tentatively the fire oversight meeting. I have not got any paperwork on it, but that's what's listed on the city website. They have it listed as October 4th at 5:30. Again, I haven't got information, so I'm going to say that's tentatively scheduled. The senior oversight is scheduled for the 7th at 4:30 at the senior center. The JED update that Dr. Cross asked about, we do have a meeting this Saturday at 8:00 AM here, if any of you would like to come. I think the main thing that was changed in the JED from our last meeting was the contributions that the JED will be doing. The JED will now be giving 6% a year from the top after January 1st of 25, 2025. Prior to that, we called it like the construction year a lot of times, the construction money, if you care, refer to that. We'll, there would be 21% contribution will be made during those years. So, but before, I'll give you those dates. That will end, obviously, December 31st of 2024, and then the 6% will pick up continuously every year thereafter, so. That is the biggest change that was made to the JED at that meeting. And the JED board would kind of have control over those funds, and so what they could spend it on. And the JED board always has the possibility, they could come back and ask for more if they, if they needed to, but that was the biggest change. Anything I should add to that, Mr. Stubb?
Nope.
Okay. All right, and that is all that I have.
Senior, just a question on the senior center. Is there any update on the at-large member and how that's going to work with the disbanding of the Germantown area seniors?
We have that meeting on the 7th, so we only meet, or, yeah, quarterly, so we haven't met.
Okay. All right, so cemetery, Met tonight. Nothing really new down there. They've had several funerals. They've got it looking good as always, so nothing new down there. Mark just, always does a good job, Mark and his crew. So we're getting into the season, although there'll be a lot less mowing, which is nice for them to catch up on some other stuff. I know they poured foundations the last month for headstones, and to get, help get caught up on that. Pool, the season finished last Monday, I believe it was, and very well attended for the, for the entire year. Revenue is a little more than we expected, which is always nice. And just a shout out to the pool manager, Mr. Devin Stottemore, who does a absolutely fantastic job, goes up and beyond constantly, and for not a lot of money. So I appreciate him very much. He definitely doesn't get the credit he deserves, but that place looks nice because of him, and a lot of the equipment we've been able to bring in for the last several years is because of, because of him as well, so. Nice job, nice job all around by the staff, but Devin does a fantastic job. WRCG, we're working to schedule a meeting, Mark. I, we haven't been able to schedule one yet, so hopefully, that'll happen within the next month. And just a note, you have a senior meeting and a fire meeting. It's also budget time, so just asking that we take a look at the budgets and don't let the city continue to rip us off for their administrative fees that they do every year. I, I think I'm the only one that stands up to them and asks at the budget meeting what the admin fee is for. So just make sure when they're charging the senior center $15,000, and it was closed for an entire year, where's that, what's that money for? So I'm going to do the same thing at the pool, as I think they're asking for 10 in ours. So just make sure that all of us at the board are standing up to the taxpayers and not letting the city just take off the top because they know they can and don't have resistance, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so that concludes my report.
Your business, our whole business, together?
Can I add one thing? That I just thought of. So it's almost election time again, so I just wanted to let everybody know that political signs can go up per hour resolution 60 days prior to an election, but they must be removed 14 days after the election for which their use is intended. Also, for the large signs, please make sure they are out of the right-of-way, so it does not impede any traffic. And other than that, if anybody has any questions about signage, please give the zoning office a call.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Ask a question.
Yes, sir.
David Groan, 14239, keeper of, I have two. Would it be fair to say that anything we pay for to do online bill paying or fees that we incur for people who do choose to pay online is all being subsidized by those of us who do not? Somebody's got to come up with the money.
So there are two fees tied to that. One is the fee that we're charged to use that service, and the other is the credit card fee, which anytime you swipe a card, you pay that fee.
I understand all that, but isn't it fair to say that those of us who don't are subsidizing those who do unless you charge them?
So if the board wished to absorb that cost 100%, they would not be passing that on to the residents at all? If they.
If the board decided to absorb it, where they getting the money?
Well, through the tax dollars, yes. But that is, I mean, everything that the board pays for, you know, comes from that money. So that is just something that the board has to decide if it's worth the convenience to the residents.
And I think it depends, too, how we do it. So, and this is just from the last meeting when we discussed it. The six, I think it was roughly $600 yearly. I'll use that number because that was coming to my head for us to join. That might have been a one-time or yearly, but if the board pays the $600 for it a year, we'll say, to join this membership. And you don't want to ever use your credit card to pay, you always want to bring a check, right? So besides the $600, right, that's where that would be divided up, if you will, you then would not have to pay any additional funds, whereas if Mr. Cleveland wanted to use his credit card, then he would have to pay the credit card fee. Correct? Does that, did that make sense? Okay, I explained that correctly.
Yes, if, if the $600 would be covered by those who use the credit card?
No, not, no, so the original, to join, whatever the.
Or the annual fee, as it were.
Annual fee would be the absorbed fee, but then every, all of the taxpayers would pay, right? Because that would come out of the fund. Then the additional fee, if Mr. Cleveland wanted to use his credit card, he would have to pay that above and beyond every time.
I thought I heard a while ago, you may absorb that.
There's the option to do that also. Yeah.
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Okay. The other question is, is anyone planning at any time before the election, a meet the candidates meeting or presentation or anything?
I think the school used to do it, but they haven't done it.
So the answer is no?
I have not heard of anything being organized. Yep.
All right, is there anything else? All right, if not, I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:43.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 7:43.